We'll start out by doing a roll call of the present members of the planning board. So for the record, so let me start with Haley.
Here.
Nathan.
Here.
Andrew.
Here.
Linda.
Here.
Is Kristen on? And Charlie.
Present.
All right. And for the record, that's Kate. Okay, moving to the first item, which is a public hearing for the application of Eastern Insurance Group LLC by John T. White Esquire for a Formula Business Special Permit under sections 3.3 and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw for a retail insurance agency at 1150 Main Street, units 2B and 3 included in the, let's see. So I think we've all gotten the planners' report on this. And we've, there was a letter in support from the West Concord Advisory Committee. And I believe there is, we're not at the limit of formula businesses. So is the applicant have anything to present?
Excuse me. I don't know if he was able to connect. I was seeing him trying to connect. It said, is that him?
I don't know if I can be heard. This is John White from Eastern Insurance Group.
We can hear you. Yes, thanks.
Having difficulty connecting online, but I was, you know, I'm here by telephone. So all the material has been submitted. If there's any questions or clarifications, please feel free to raise one, see what we can do.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. White. And let me first start by asking whether anybody on the board had any questions for the applicant. I did not. And so, anybody? Okay. Well, we've got the Elizabeth memo. And it looks like essentially there's no change from the, from the existing use. While this is a formula business, we're not up to the limit. The only change being the 1.3 square foot sign is Elizabeth, is that correct? That's a, it's essentially a sign on a, on a door, right?
That's correct. And actually, color renditions of that were submitted in our initial application. So those are also available for the board, exactly what it's going to be like.
Okay. And so looking, thank you very much. And looking at the various requirements and findings that we need to find under the applicable provisions of the bylaw pertaining to formula businesses. It looks like there are no, to me, any issues. And especially given the letter of support from the West Concord Advisory Committee, who keeps a close eye on these things, I think we, unless anybody has any further comments, I'll ask for any public comment. And then we can move forward. So if any members of the public have a question, please, or a comment, please raise your hand. Or if you are on dialed in via phone, I think if you press pound nine, I believe. Okay, seeing no raised hands. Let me ask if anybody would like to make a motion to, let's see, let me just verify here what we've got to find. We've moved to grant with conditions, the application, if anybody else would like to do that, I can jump in. Okay, then I make a motion to grant with conditions, the application of Eastern Insurance Group LLC by John T. White Esquire for a Formula Business Special Permit under sections 3.3 and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw for a retail insurance agency at 1150 Main Street, units 2B and 3, that's parcels 3790-2-2 and 3792-2.3. And can I get a second? Nathan, you won that race. So with that seconded, I will take a roll call vote, starting with Linda.
Hi, yes.
Thank you. Haley.
Yes.
Nathan.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
And Kate.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, and just to check in case she joined us, Kristen joined, I think she said she's missing this meeting.
Yes, she is missing this meeting.
Okay, all right. So with that unanimously approved by the planning board, thank you very much, Mr. White.
Thank you very much to the entire board. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we are, are about 24 minutes ahead of schedule here. So let's move maybe to some administrative items while we're waiting. Or, excuse me, Elizabeth, do I need to close the public hearing?
No, once, once you take a roll call vote.
Okay, Adam, the item is, is, is complete. Okay. Thank you. I'll learn these procedural matters, you know, in about a year's time. So moving to the administrative items, the Throw Depot discussion, I think, will be a lengthy administrative item. So maybe we can, we can wait until we've done the 7:30 item, maybe move to the draft meeting minutes. We received minutes of July 12, 2021. We also received executive session minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, the July 12th is executive session minutes. We're going to hold on those. And then August 24, 2021, we also received. Linda, I believe you had provided some comments, maybe in writing, or some edits. Did anybody else have any edits to the minutes of August 24, 2021?
So Linda's edit was just, a period was missing. So I don't think it's substantial.
Okay. My one thought was that Elizabeth, I had gone through sort of, I think, the basis of what I thought was the, the applicant having met the requirement to apply for a reduction in required parking. I think that was truncated somewhat to saying I noted the, not the basis, but the, the purview of the board to review this for the, for the applicant. I suppose that's sufficient. I mean, we reduced a long discussion down into the minutes. I think the substance is there. Does anybody else have any, that was a pretty, you know, there was a lot going on in that meeting. Does anybody have any comments or feel like anything they said needs to be expanded upon? In case anybody didn't get the chance to review those, that was the reconsideration of the 1440 Main Street, as well as Concord Children's Center. Super great minute taking then, all around. And Linda, thank you for your edits. I would then make a motion that we, that the planning board approve the minutes as with, with the revisions provided by Linda for August 24, 2021. Can I get a second?
I second.
Thank you, Linda. And then you got to be quick with your mute button, I saw you. All right. And by the way, as I said, Nathan, Andrew, we do keep a score. The person with the most seconds at the end of the year, they, they get a scone. Okay, thank you, Linda. I'll take a roll call vote. Linda, how do you vote on approving the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, Haley.
Yes.
Nathan.
Dana wasn't there, so can't say.
Okay, all right. Take the, Andrew.
Yes.
And Kate.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And I'm a yes on those minutes. We still have 20 minutes. So I think the, we've got the, Elizabeth, would you like to go through the envisioned Concord Planning Board action item updates?
Sure.
We've got 20 minutes. I think we could probably do it.
I think so.
So you want to take this? Great.
So this is the, I guess I'm going to say your rolling action item chart for the planning board that each year you go through. And it's, let me see if I can move this over just one. Okay. So can everybody see all three columns? I can never tell what people can see or not.
I'm just comparing it to, yes, we can see all the columns that were on the, on the handout. Yep.
Okay. Um. So it's, I mean, it's a, it's a challenging chart to go through, just because there's so much going on. But what I did is I went through and updated. So to show things that had the board is working on and things that were completed in the last year. And going through. So what I probably want the board to focus on is, one, there's the, the green items. And then, you know, the yellow. So those are things you're working on now and things that, you know, are a year or two out. And ongoing is, you know, the board is constantly, you know, collaborating with, you know, other boards. And then going through and just highlighting. So four and six, you know, these are two things that the planning board is currently working on. And then we have number one in regards to maintaining or expanding zoning policies to allow mixed use and appropriately dense development in and around the villages. So the board's currently working on the Throw Depot business area for that. And then these white, the white areas are things that last year or the year before, when the board reviewed this, didn't move forward on those things. Those were much further out on the board's schedule or ideas. And so going back to here, you know, we have blue and red. And as you scroll through, there's, there's a couple of blue items. There currently are no far out, long-term red items. So that's one thing that the board can look at all these different, I'm going to say uncolored action items. But I think for the exercise for the select board meeting, and what we will need to know is who is going to be attending that meeting. So if there is a quorum of members, who more than likely will have to post it as a meeting. So at this stage, it's whether, one, the board agrees with the updates that I made to the chart. And second, whether the board wants to look at some of these uncolored items. And whether you feel that that's something, you know, long-term that the board should consider, or whether it's something that, you know, the board is not going to be the lead on, but needs to work with another board or committee. Or if it's just not something that the board feels is, you know, in their purview to, to be a participant or a co-sponsor on.
Okay. Elizabeth, if I can, just to, just to get us situated and really also for the, for the benefit of Andrew. Andrew, if you don't know really what we're looking at here, that's understandable. These are goals that were pulled out of the recently completed 2020 10-year plan. Conquer does a plan every 10 years, which sets the sort of the master, the top level direction for the town over the next 10 years. And with it, and that's done through a long public process with inputs from not only extensive public meetings, but also from numerous town committees that have input. The planning board certainly had a significant amount of input on it. And then they published the plan after about a, what about an 18-month to two-year process, right?
Yes, but it was approved in June, July of 2018.
Oh, 18, okay. But it's the 2020 plan, right? Well, whichever, we are in a, we are in the 10-year window of the current plan. A couple of years into it, it sounds like, and it, the, these were the items that were identified in the plan that were either directly under the purview of the planning board or were related to the mission, the, the scope or the mission, the mission's the wrong word, but I'm not going to, I'm going to find the right one of the board, the charge. Thank you. And so these things were identified and, and then we set out certain goals of things to work on near term, long term. So that's a summary. And then Elizabeth, at this juncture, we have a upcoming meeting that the select board is asking the various boards that are charged with items under the 10-year plan to come and provide an update on where things stand and what they're doing, correct?
Correct. So I actually think the planning board is probably one of the very few, if maybe not the, the only board. I think the select board have done this type of exercise to some level. But I'm not, I'm not sure there have been many other boards and committees that have done this level of analysis of the action items in the envisioned Concord Plan. So I think you're in a good spot.
Well, I think that that's probably because of the tremendous staff support that the board gets. Because you've done all this work, of course, not us. So I, I guess, so with the background and our objective now to be, to, I think, in the next few minutes would be to see if the updates that were, are being provided, which is that far right-hand column, under, under the timing header, we have any, any proposed modifications there? And also then whether any of the currently untagged items, the ones that are, have not been highlighted, whether we want to go ahead and, and bring those within our planning sort of presumably longer-term goals. Does anybody have any, I'll just throw it open for discussion. I'm going to guess Kate.
Of course. Elizabeth, is this in our inbox somewhere? I'm sorry, what was that? Did you send this out to us? Is this in our inbox somewhere? Are we looking at it just on the screen, on your shared screen? Can I find it in my inbox? No, or no?
Yep. It would have been emailed to you.
Thank you.
Kate, it's also on the, on the current meeting documents on the planning board.
Great. That's my question. Thank you.
Anybody have any, how about, let's, let's break this down a little bit. Does anybody, first of all, in terms of the updates, have any additional excuse upon color to add to the comments that are already provided? Or, or anything, there's a few comments, for example, you know, along the lines of this will be led by another committee. I felt, felt those were all accurate, but if anybody has any comments in terms of what the planning board's role should be. If not, one thing I would just note is this is a really good way to see what we're working on. And, and some of the reasons why, we were reviewing this, of course, at the same time, we were reviewing all the various materials that are coming to completion on the Throw Business District. And why are we doing that? And that's because, it's because one of the primary items identified in the long-range plan or multiple items are addressed through the, the planning that we're doing around the village centers as, as under economic vitality, less so under the housing goals. What about? Yeah.
Sorry, can, can you just zoom out? It's like, I don't know if it's just me, but it's really big on my screen. So I can't really see that much. Yeah, perfect.
One of the things.
Want us to go one by one and it through all of the items or just kind of randomly?
Linda, I would, I would suggest is that you identify the one, call out the ones that you think we should, we should focus on. If you have any comments, I've got a couple, but I'll hold, hold back.
Well, well, one that I'm a little confused about is the Neighborhood Conservation District. You know, I think, I, I guess we've discussed that since I've been on the, the board a number of times. And I guess I had the impression that we were going to try and come up with some information, but to provide to groups that might be interested in establishing a neighborhood conservation district. But we did not feel that the planning board was in a position to actively put into effect a district itself. So, so I'm, I'm a little confused here by saying that we're looking to create a bylaw. And maybe I just missed the, the information.
Yeah, and maybe, and Kate, you're close to this conversation. So maybe if you want to chime in. I, I think that what we were talking about was what, what would a neighborhood, neighborhood conservation district bylaw be? I don't think, I think we, we're of a consensus, as you said, that the planning board is not going to create a neighborhood conservation district. That needs to come from a neighborhood, but we should investigate creating the framework under, having a zoning bylaw under which the framework of a neighborhood conservation district could be created. I think was, that, that was the takeaway I had from our last meeting. Where we discussed this, if it wasn't the very last one. Kate, did you have further input on it in terms of what your understanding is where we stand?
I agree that we don't have consensus on it. I think the way Elizabeth worded it was that we're going to continue to look at the possibility of creating one rather than that we have an intent to create one. So but I, I think, I think it sounds more definite than the, the last group conversation just by announcing the timing of 2023. But I think, I think there's maybe, I think maybe we do have consensus around continuing to contemplate the possibility of doing it. Of continuing to look at it and continuing to contemplate what our goals would and the possibilities are there. So I think that's reflected in the language. Linda, do you, would you propose a change to that?
Um, no, I, I think that I, I was confused with the 2023. And because it seemed to me if we were going to propose something in 2023, we maybe should be focusing more on that than we, you know, have been in terms of. I, I guess. And maybe the, the issue is really maybe, maybe we should set up a meeting with the historic commission and, and the historic district commissions and just decide if this is a priority for the three groups or, or not. And decide if we're going to be in the lead with this or not. Because it seems to me to spend a lot of time on this and say that we're doing something actively in the green. When we've said we really don't think that we can point to a group that would find it useful. You know, just maybe it shouldn't be an in-progress green. Maybe it should be yellow.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I think it would be great if we had this, but I, I really don't see how.
Yeah, I agree with that yellow. And then maybe, because it's always kind of been there in the back burner. And so Elizabeth, maybe it says, instead of saying currently reviewing, we could just say continues to review possibility. And so and, and you probably don't want to get into it, Elizabeth, but these are homes that are not eligible for listing as a historic district, right? So I kind of forgot the, why, why the coordination with Historic District Commission? Just because they have more experience with this stuff?
Um, so all of the examples that, you know, I looked at, there's, there's some coordination. And, and literally some of them would had either HDC members or historical commission members on a, you know, a committee that would need to be established to, you know, review, I guess, projects in the Neighborhood Conservation District. Or some of them, the, the framework, the bylaw would be if there was a neighborhood that wanted to form a neighborhood conservation district, they had to present a proposal to, I'm going to say like a panel that consisted of planning board, HDC, historical commission, on whether having a neighborhood conservation district even had the merits, you know, to have it established. So in, in all the examples that I've seen, there's, there's some coordination with both of those groups.
Thank you. Good. I like where it stands. I think that looks good.
That's great input. Thank you both. Linda, since you had the floor and things to look at, were there any other items that you wanted to comment on?
I'm not right now. Thank you.
Okay. Elizabeth, just a couple of comments. I, I, I know you, we've listed the, the, under 4.4 land use, we've got the Throw Depot Business Redevelopment Project. The TB, the TDB redevelopment project under zoning changes in village centers. One of the things I was wondering about is, you know, I mean, that's also goes towards, you know, immediately above that in this numbering is, oh, on your screen, I can see the cells. Okay. I'm looking at my local copy. We've got the increase for allowable density in certain locations by allowing multifamily houses. I, my thought was, didn't, haven't we done that with accessory dwelling units and, and the two-family? And that maybe that could be, I mean, you know, accomplished, right?
Which item is that?
It's in, I think the cell for 4.4 land use. So on my local copy, a little further down. And then it's item number one, increased allowable density. I mean, I'm certain, you know, we could go further, you know, there, there's discussion on tiny houses. But I think if, at the, at the very least, we should, you know, the, the two-family piece was done post envisioned Concord Plan. I, immediately below that, the, the.
Yeah, no, there's the accessory dwelling.
In 4.3.
Is it 4.3? Oh, okay.
I mean, I, I don't want to just sort of, you know, do, take one action and say we've, we've accomplished multiple goals, but I do think that those are overlapping there.
Okay, on that same, I'm wanting to get credit for things. And I think the Throw Depot can go to this number four under streamlined coordinate zoning and permitting.
Yeah, hang on. As you can tell, Excel and I do not.
Not BFFs.
No, no, not at all. So Burton, do you want to have this as completed? I mean, the, the board has talked about tiny houses. And they, they present a lot of different challenges when it comes to water and sewer connections, similar to the. connections similar to the accessory accessory dwelling and the two family, which water and sewer were were slowly working through how that can happen. And but I don't I don't think there's necessarily a reason, you know, to not continue to have the conversation about teeny houses. But I think with the accessory dwelling unit bylaw that was passed.
Yeah.
Somebody could do a teeny house. There's no restriction on on size. So I agree that this can be done as completed.
Well, I I think that this goal and the things we're doing there, we are incrementally doing, right? That's why we we didn't do as a right a two family and, you know, that special permit, we restricted it to certain districts. Keep me honest as I get these things confused. So I would view that whole goal as ongoing in the sense that we will continue to look at this goal in terms of, you know, looking at different housing models, but we have certainly completed a couple of very key goals there. I I think, you know, so I I appreciate that this list is not if we mark that completed, that we have to stop talking about different types of multifamily or tiny houses. So I'd say completed, you know, we've accomplished some elements of it, but we'll continue to work on it. But if we want to market completed, what have you? On the on the next goal incentivize otherwise or otherwise enable housing development approaches. One thought I had on that was, you know, some of the discussion Kate that you've introduced or Haley around making some of the, I mean, we we our discussion has been largely around energy efficiency and and green building, but that seems to tie directly into this. I guess it's not really changing the housing model, but changing the PRD elements. So I don't know, Elizabeth, if you think that that's there are another place that that discussion, I mean, at least that may be put the discussion into, you know, an ongoing or or one to two year plan. Unless you think that's going to something different in the long range plan.
No, I think this item does relate to PRD type developments.
Yeah.
And I'm not quite sure if under at least planning board items. There was that type of specific action item dealing with sustainability other than I think it's it's up here. Dealing with green zoning.
Yeah, it's definitely. Maybe let's just keep that there. I'm trying to over trying to get rid of. Okay, let's leave that there. I think in that's on that. But going back to, I guess it's 4.3. The 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 there is a goal of researching alternate zoning methods to preserve the natural and architectural characteristics of Concord while allowing appropriately scaled and designed redevelopment or development. Well, my thought there was the discussion we had a couple of years ago around. Oh, what's that? What's that term of art from zoning? Where where you're zoning based upon massing and size and shape rather than use necessarily? You know what I'm talking about?
Not yet.
Not yet. This is when they wish we had Alan still on the on the board.
Oh, form based code?
Form based code. Is that what this is calling out form based code? Or is this or is this also doing things like for the thorough business district or West Concord having designed guidelines or design requirements?
Um, I I think under this one would be completed would be the changes the board made to PRD. I think ongoing would be items, you know, such as the throw depot project and potential looking into the the form based code. I think I think all of those kind of fall in to this as well as.
We're going to update the design for what's it called them? Like design characteristics under site plan, right?
Yes. So that would be, you know, that would be another. Well, so the board already did the amendment add the sustainability criteria to site plan. So that's kind of more up in the beginning under the green zoning, which I don't. So that's, I mean, that's kind of the that's kind of the problem with this chart and having these single colors and and maybe this is just something to think about is because each one, there's different things that can be done. And you know, maybe it's kind of getting rid of the colors and just beginning to continually list what's completed, what's ongoing, what's and and not necessarily have the colors, but have the the basically the headings. So this one would be in progress, you know, plant planning boards 21, 22 goals and but these items can in progress, maybe, you know, changed to completed in a year or and and basically kind of get rid of the colors.
Yeah, and I I mean, that's that's fine, because I'm not wed to the idea that something like I said, is within the scope of a 10 10 year plan and working under that that something is going to be, you know, one and done. I most of these goals are too general, you know, it's to to for a particular item. I I do think it is helpful, though, to list out some of those things that we have either completed or worked on, because in in this is a little bit of a scorecard to keep track of what we we've done and why we're doing it. And so in particular, for like that item four, we were just looking at in terms of researching alternative zoning methods. I mean, I do think that certainly with the design guidelines, I think the throw business district stuff fall it it falls within that direction we've been given. And I I form based code that could be, you know, that would be a red red item for long term plan because we know how complicated that would be to move to form based code. Or and also then there's one other item you mentioned, but oh, the the changes we made to the PRDs. I think.
So kind of what I'm proposing would be. So maybe it we can go down here and I'll show you. So so for like this one, it would be what's red? Sorry.
Red is.
So you could say. But then what have you done?
Well, short. I've got an echo now. It would be implementing design requirements for the for the throw business district. And and the and the PR PRD update.
So Haley, if you want to tell me how the how to do a, how do you do a return in a cell? Is it like control enter or? Oh, you're on mute.
Sorry, was a return, you mean?
Yeah, well, if I hit, if I just hit return, it goes to the next cell. But if I want to move like completed.
Um, maybe just hit the spacebar a few times to see if that works.
Or you could put wrap text.
Kind of just depends on the formatting that exists exists right now. But yes, just hit the spacebar, see if it'll go.
Yeah. Oh, eventually. Well, yes. I didn't know if there was like.
Yeah, there's no other secret way.
Okay. Okay. And then you were saying in progress, Burton. What was the?
I I apologize, Elizabeth. I've been quickly trying to scarf my dinner while you type.
No, that's.
For a depot design requirements.
So that's kind of what I was thinking you could do instead of having the colors.
I think that works great.
And and maybe, you know, what I could do is I can just color, I can just I can just color the Oh, did I freeze up? I did freeze up, didn't I?
Yep.
Okay.
But I like that. Let me ask, and I'm just keeping an eye towards we're now running into the 7:30 agenda time. So this meeting is, when it when is it scheduled for? This with the select board?
It's in November.
November. Okay. And the idea is that we present to the select board what we've been working on. They might ask some questions. We will probably go in with quite something of a formal presentation to be able to run through these things. And and that's that's the idea, right? I I I've not attended one of these before. We're providing a plan.
Well, so this is the first one I believe they've ever had.
Okay.
And I and I don't know what the format's going to be yet.
Okay, so then, since we don't even know the format, we won't ask for people if they're if they want to go, it's a couple, it's what two or three months off. And does anybody else have any other comments on particular items they wanted to call out at this juncture? Questions about them, wondering what they are, if they weren't on the committee when when we did them. If not, I would suggest we go ahead and set this aside for the evening and we move over to the the 7:30 item.
So what I what I can do is that I can, now that you've had the discussion, if people want to send me their their comments or suggestions, I can update this table with the new format and put it on your next agenda. Because I mean, you you have time to, you don't have to do this all tonight, if that works.
That works for me and that give us a good chance to review it ahead of time now that people have been thinking about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just discovered alt enter will allow you to.
Alt enter.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What if you're on a Mac?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Nathan. Now, if we can, then I'd like to move to the consideration for recommendation to the zoning board of appeals of the application of the Concord Housing Authority for a special permit and site plan review under sections 10, 11 dot six and 11 dot eight of the zoning bylaw for two unit planned residential development at 365 Commonwealth Avenue. And so I think we tonight, we're hoping to hear from the applicant, maybe understand how this fits on the site. And so with that, if the applicant is ready to present, I'd like to offer the floor. And so I know you know who's presenting.
So Rick Eifler.
Okay.
There he is.
Mr. Eifler. You are now unmuted.
Sorry, I just got kicked out and I'm rejoining.
Okay.
So would you like to have me just give you an overview of the project?
I think an overview of the project, I think it would be really helpful in particular for me, and we can take a look at the the site plan as well. I I also, if there are any, you know, elevation drawings that would, I think, be helpful to understand the context of how it fits into the neighborhood. I particularly like to see an elevation drawing of the back of the house and how it fits in with the natural surroundings.
So let's see. We can start with the site plan. This is, this is actually an updated site plan. It's just slightly different than the one that was in our ZBA application. Because we're it has some responses to some of the comments from the Conservation Commission and the, you know, the NRC and the Engineering Department. But it's essentially the same site plan. This is Commonwealth Avenue down here. This is Warner Pond up here. This is our existing house at 365 Commonwealth Avenue. And this is the existing driveway that is the current construction road into the Jaro Park project. So the Jaro Park land is back up here. The Bruce Freeman rail trail is right here. The prison is over here and the rotary is down at the end of Commonwealth Avenue down here. So the proposed new house that the Concord Housing Authority is is trying to build is this little house here next to our existing house here. It's about 1100 square feet and it barely squeezes into the the property that the town gave us that adjoined our current property. And because the property the town gave us is not really a buildable lot. We have combined the two parcels and are presenting this as two two buildings on one lot, which is only allowed. We're only allowed to do that if we apply for a PRD. So that's really kind of why we're here. We have been through NRC meetings and have just been continuing them until we get you know, meetings done with the the planning board and the ZBA. So it's just being orchestrated as to who wants to meet and give approvals first, I guess, and that's kind of up to the town. Let's see, the this is the front elevation of the existing house here. This is the first floor plan of the existing house. The buildings are proposed. The new one is 13 feet away from the existing house. This is its front elevation, the Commonwealth Avenue elevation. The back elevation, these are the elevations of the new house again, front right side. This is what it would look like from the Bruce Freeman rail trail as you have just crossed the crosswalk on Commonwealth Avenue. This is what it would look like on the pond side. And if you were standing between the two houses in that 13 foot gap, this is the side elevation of the new little house. There were some comments. This is the original site plan that we submitted that had the engineering comment about our our infiltration, this little infiltration gravel here. It's one foot deep gravel for a downspout to go into conflicts with the stairs coming back down off the back of our deck. You can see that the stairs came down and then the engineer was putting the infiltration gravel here. So that's obviously a conflict. So we moved it over here, and that's why the revised site plan has it over on this side. There were other comments that we weren't showing perimeter drain and what happened to the perimeter drains. So we do have perimeter drains around the footings of the property. And then they lead into a pipe which has a outfall. That's the detail for the outfall here. So it has to go through water from the rear half of the roof has to go through this infiltration trench. It will then either be infiltrated into the sandy soil or if there's overflow, it might follow out the footing drain and end up in the footing drain outfall, which is been positioned to be just outside of the the 50 foot buffer to the pond. So those are, this is a new two car driveway, just to finish off what we're building. We're building a new two. finish off what we're building, we're building a new two car driveway. We are removing the current pavement, which is the beginning of the driveway into the Jarrow Park parcel. If you were to drive by that parcel right now. You would see that it's being used as a instruction, it looks like this. It's the construction entrance into the Jarrow Park during the day, those gates are open and the trucks go in there. So you can see that we're waiting for the phase one of the Jarrow Park project to be completed before we can build our house, there, there has to be the construction of a a new access road to the park further down the, and across the Bruce Freeman rail trail before we can take away this driveway pavement, turn it into our little front yard and build our little house here. So those are some of the things, you may have other questions, that's kind of a little bit of an overview, but I'm happy to focus on whatever you would like to focus on.
Thanks very much, so as of today, have those two parcels been combined into a single parcel?
Yes.
Okay, so, so that's one parcel and you've got, and with one existing septic hookup.
Sewer hookup over here.
Yeah.
We have to renew that, it had some, we're going to rebuild that.
Right.
Some, but an old tree used to be here and the roots got into it, so we're going to rebuild the existing one. Build the new one, there'll be a new manhole clean out before it goes into the street and joins the existing sewer, this is the end of the existing town sewer.
Yeah. Okay, well, one, I guess, one of the things I want to ask about, that, you know, there were some comments in the, in the planner's report about natural resources requiring plantings, I guess, in the first instance, this is really tight onto the pond, so are there no issues with building within a required setback or from, from the, the water?
We're outside the 50 foot zone, so we're just subject to.
Okay.
See the 50 foot zone now dotted here.
Yeah.
And we're outside of that.
And so, so Rick, Rick, you might want to use your updated plan, because that also shows your area for wetland mitigation.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
So we are removing invasive species in this zone.
Uh huh.
There's a planting plan for replanting that area.
Okay, and on, on the backside of that house, it was one of the, I, I've been out there, I think probably with you, Rick, when you were getting a funding from the CPC, which is another hat I wear. And, and it's a small space, right, you guys have really had to be creative to find a way to get a house in in there, I what my, probably one of my primary concerns is the impact visually of the two story structure, I guess it's 31 feet right there on the pond, which we're, you know, we're also investing a lot of money in, in terms of the dredging project that will be happening there, so hopefully people being able to use the pond. You know, and a million, a very significant amount of money as, together with the new park. And I know there's a long history here, and I remind the board that, you know, part of the condition of buying a Jarrow property was was creating this lot for affordable housing, so this has obviously been a long times in the work. But I'm just concerned about the visual impact on the pond of having that house right there, can you talk about what the planting plan is with respect to softening that impact? If any, with that house, which will be, I mean, I guess it's outside the 50 foot zone, but I, I'll probably have a lovely view of the pond, what about the view from the pond to the house?
There's no planting plan, it's a very narrow backyard, it's just going to be grass.
Grass right down to the pond.
No, there's also, there are, there are species of, you know, pond plants in addition to the invasive species that we're removing. So the back, the, the actual backyard is pretty thin.
Yeah.
Behind, and then it turns into sort of these rougher, more natural plants, and some of these are, I mean, there's invasive species all over the place there.
Yeah, so I thought I saw in the planner's report some language about some, some plantings, some, some, some shrub plantings, low bush, blueberry and the like, Elizabeth, wasn't that in your report? And I thought we were, that, that would be a plan that would be coming.
Yeah, so we actually have that in. One of the site plans does have a planting plan for that. Let's see if I can find the one that does. I mean, it's really just, it's, it's, it's listed, lists a few plants. And is done by, you know, a botanist that's. And we will be presenting that to the NRC at our next meeting.
I mean, it would be candid, I, you know. I'd like to see an attractive shoreline, the town's investing a lot of money in the pond, we, we've invested a great deal of money in the park. And, you know, I, you may have heard when we visited this, I've, I've always had some qualms about squeezing a house in there, I also generally have you know, concerns that placing, I mean, I think it's very it's, it's an excellent thing that we're, we're getting to put in a, a, a unit of affordable housing and getting too added to the, to our role. But I also am aware that there's a lot of Concord's affordable housing stock on Commonwealth Ave will be immediately adjacent to Commonwealth Ave and generally in this neighborhood. And I want to make sure that, you know, once it's built, that there is affordable landscaping that is established. Excuse me, attractive landscaping that's established. Because it might not necessarily be, you know, maintained or enhanced from that point, or enhanced from that point forward, so I, I mean, I don't want to belabor the point, but I would like to understand what the planting plan will be. And ensure that it's not just, you know, a couple of, of views stuck along the foundation and, and a couple of low bush blueberries along the shoreline, I think it, I think it's important, given this, this location, as, as the, as the West, West Concord Advisory Committee said, it's, it's a gateway to town down Commonwealth Ave, and I think it should that investment should be made, given all the other investments the town has made.
Well, we can send along a copy of the planting plan. I don't know, I mean, it's really not going to be visible from the pond, because we're not touching anything up against the pond, it'll be visible from the backyard of, of this house. But it's just a small area, and then everything else we're doing is just grass, we don't really have room to do anything else, so.
Okay.
No, there's no, there's no planting plan beyond what's being required by the NRC.
Okay, so then, the opportunity to require that, I guess, the NRC is not doing it, Elizabeth, I mean, within the purview of a site plan review. I know, you know, I'm thinking back to former, our former chair who was so keen around planting and trees and things like that. How much does that fall within a site plan review of things we can, we can, we can speak to?
So that would be within the purview of site plan review as far as the the, as you said, the visual, potential visual impact of that 31 foot facade from the pond and the Jarrow land. I think that before the board were to move forward with any specifics, I'd probably want to speak to the Natural Resources Director and get her input on the I guess, the, the viability of any type of landscaping that could be proposed to provide that type of, of visual softening or, you know, some type of visual buffer to that side. And then, you know, my, my other aspect is that the plan doesn't and the narrative doesn't discuss how the front of the house is going to be treated. Other than a walkway and a driveway.
Right.
Yeah, that's all we're proposing right now. We could ask the town to, to do a couple of, of trees in the tree planting program, but you know, we're currently $240,000 short of being able to build this house, so we're not anxious to add a, an expensive landscape plan at this point. We might be able to raise money for a landscape plan in the future. But we are in a struggle right now to, to even build this house, so.
Can I ask what the cost is of the, of the house?
Excuse me?
Can I ask what the cost of the house is?
The total budget now has come down, now that we have plant, architectural plans and the site plan. So the total project budget for the, for the house is, is right around $700,000.
Okay.
So Burton, to, to your question, I do have the ability to utilize some of the tree preservation mitigation funds that we have received to do certain, you know, tree plantings in certain areas, and I think that this would be a good candidate, since it is, you know, visually the public can, is, the public view is not just from Commonwealth Ave, the public view is also from the rear of the house, so, but.
I would love to hear your and Delia's thoughts on that and, and what could be done.
I have, I have no, I have no problem saying that we can plant a very nice tree, once the current pavement for the Jarrow driveway is ripped up and, you know, the final grading is done. I can, on, I can 100% commit to having Public Works plant you know, a new tree or even a couple of trees.
Right.
Along this section, since it, you know, there doesn't appear to be, you know, a tree in front of the existing house or near the existing house either. So I can commit to that, but I would like to talk to Delia about the rear of the house and the pond side.
Great, that would be really helpful, I just want to make sure we've explored the issue. Just given, given what a, what an important parcel this has ended up becoming. I, I've, I've taken up a lot of time, a, a, any other members of the board have questions, comments on, on the report or what we've seen here tonight? Yes, Linda?
I was interested in the fact that this will be an all electric house. And I wondered, just for background information, how that came about and were there issues with getting gas service to the house, or was it a purposeful decision in, in terms of the environment, just what, what formed? Form that choice?
Oh, I would say we, it was a goal from the beginning to do a fossil free house if we could pull it off, so that's what we're trying to pull off, is a fossil free house. That was a commitment we made to the new preservation. To, as one of the goals of the project was to at least attempt to be a fossil free house.
And did you price out the difference in cost of the house of being fossil fuel free and traditional construction?
No.
Thank you. And, and have you examined, can there be any solar component here, or is the siding not amenable to that?
Well, south is to the left, pretty much. Let's see if there's a north there, yeah, south is pretty much to the left. So, and we have our best exposure on the Commonwealth Avenue side, which is so there, there's not a huge opportunity for solar on, and it's a tiny, tiny house, so. So it's really not, and we don't have any land for land based solar either. So we really don't have much of an opportunity for solar, no.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a question about just how close this is between each house, I mean, it's, it's one car width effectively between the two houses, is that consistent with the rest of Commonwealth Avenue, or is this going to look weird that these two things are close but not touching, I know there's a lot of multifamily on Commonwealth, and there's a lot of different architecture styles, but I just didn't know if that was.
I'm trying to see if maybe there's an aerial.
Yeah, I was just pulling up an.
So there are houses that I would say are 25 feet apart, there are, from my driving down Commonwealth Avenue, I don't think there are any examples of 13 feet apart. But certainly, if two houses are up close to their side yard setback, they would be 25 feet apart. So, so they are closer together probably than any two houses. Except that they're both relatively small houses and you know, it's, 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 you know, almost small enough to be perceived as a little brother to the big brother kind of thing, so I, I, I think, and it's the best we can do, so. You know, I guess that's probably the best answer is that's the best we can do. You can't move to the right. The town is reserved to 20 foot easement. So you can see we're practically touching the easement. And we can't be closer than 12 feet to the existing house, or else we get into, well, it's probably 10 feet. We get into fire code issues, so we really have very little back and forth ability here. We can't go closer to the pond, we can't go closer to the street, so it kind of designed itself, given the property, the land we were given.
So Andrew, to your point, just looking at looking at the town's GIS, starting with this is 365. So the new house will be basically right about here. So to your point. There, there actually is a fairly significant the, one of the more significant spaces between the existing house and the adjacent house along the street. And then, you know, you get into you know. So this one's, you know, roughly 25 feet. A lot of these are mostly 20 feet. A couple of them.
There's a tight one down there at 308.
Couple of them get, you know. Yeah, so that's 20 feet.
Yeah, well, just in my mind, what was hard for me was the fact that with such a tight gap where you have parking and all these other considerations. There's less potential for things like even shade trees and stuff separating the houses, that it becomes this like little it, it, it's just, I, I understand Commonwealth Ave has a mix of styles and stuff, but, but ever since I saw this plan, it just seemed very tight, that's all. And there isn't a lot of, I mean.
Yeah, so.
Burton mentioned, there's not a lot of landscaping going on at the existing house either.
So predominantly, yeah. So predominantly though, between houses, there isn't a lot of landscaping between houses because it's driveways. So, you know, here's a driveway, here's a double driveway, here's a double driveway. Here's a double driveway, so most of them.
Yeah, but visually, they have a tree behind them, though, there, there's something breaking it up, because this drops straight into the pond, it becomes this like wide open like a house plunked in the middle of a field kind of thing, that was just my only existing concern.
Can I ask a question, so the existing house, that is not going to be or is it going to be rebuilt also as affordable housing?
It is affordable housing, it's, it's our existing house.
Okay, that's, yeah, so, and in the new, in the build of the new, the new house, the parking lot, it looks like our, the parking spaces that have been put there, there's two spots, those are new for the new construction, is that right? The existing parking spaces for the existing house will stay where they are?
Yes.
And it's, given that it's 13 feet wide, it would not be possible, or it'd be super tight to have basically tandem parking between the two, I'm just thinking of a way to free up some green space on the front sides of both houses, if we had tandem parking that just ran between the two houses, because you're not, there are no windows on the new house really looking at that point anyway. If there's a way we could do that and then not have two you know, whatever the dimensions are of the, the parking spaces in front of both houses.
Well, it's only wide enough for one car and it slopes from the upper front yard grade down to the lower. So it's too steep a slope to be.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Nathan, to follow up on your first question on the affordability, it, it currently is an affordable dwelling, small A. I mean, it's affordable. It's the Conference Housing Authority. But I, it's not currently on our subsidized housing inventory. So with this PRD, the product, the both units will then be a local action unit and included on the SHI.
So I really like the idea of using the, the funds from the tree by law to, to get a couple of trees in there. I think that's a great idea.
I think it's great. I mean, it's, it's already a weird, like there's like, unfortunately being pretty much kitty corner to the prison. Like in my mind, there's not a lot of like character anyways to, you know, maintain or whatever. So you're doing what you can and the best you can and it's more affordable and it's all electric. I mean, can't really ask for all that much more.
Thank you, Haley. I, I was going to mention that it's currently a paved driveway to, to, to nothing right now. So just turning it into the, a front yard lawn with a nice little house is a huge improvement.
Elizabeth, aside from, I, I think you're, you need the dark sky cut sheet. Are there any other items that we're waiting on other than actions of other boards or, or town staff that we should be asking the applicant for to, as additional materials for when we, we give this full consideration?
So from, from my report, it is just addressing the comments from the engineering division, which on, even on the revised plans. Rick, one question was why is the infiltration trench abutting the foundation? And why isn't it, you know, pulled away a little bit? That was one of engineering's comments.
Justin about that. He, he wasn't concerned from a town point of view. He was just questioning that he like, he wouldn't have done it that way. It's, but it's really only a one foot gravel bed, naming it an infiltration trench is probably a little bit of a, of a randios name for what it really is. It's gravel at the base of a downspout. And that's why it's there. The, 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 the NRC asked for erosion control. They wanted the rear downspout to not just flow into the pond. It's, it's not really what it sounds like.
Okay. So to your point, Burton, I think the revised plans will need to be reviewed by engineering and, and address their concerns. I can discuss with Delia the possibility for some type of I want to say substantial, but some type of landscaping that might help soften, you know, that facade from the pond. And then Rick, I don't know if you've selected exterior light fixtures yet at this point?
No, we'll probably have a wall fixture on the, you know, the back landing as it, that goes down the steps. That would probably be a fairly inconspicuous, normal, everyday wall fixture that you see on the back door of anybody's house. And the front porch would probably have a ceiling fixture. And the, I, I don't even know that we're even planning a post lamp out at the street because I imagine that your whole area is lit up like a Christmas tree at night because of the prison. So I don't think we need it.
So I don't, at this stage, Burton, I don't necessarily, you know, if cut she, if they had selected light fixtures and had cut sheets to show that they're dark sky compliant. But that can also just be wrapped into a condition of approval that they be dark sky compliant.
Mm hmm. Yeah. Okay. And, and Rick, you've mentioned a couple of times that we are going to try to be all electric. The, the planner's report says it will be all electric. Is it, will it be all electric?
If, if you want to make that a condition, I guess it would be. The only reason I'm saying we're trying is that we have to put this project out to bid and we have to raise funds. And if there is a mismatch, we might have to look into alternatives to.
Okay.
Doing it this way. Okay. I'm perfectly happy to have it be a condition. I mean, we're, we're essentially trying to build here what the town wants and what has been voted for twice in town meeting. So I feel like we are the, you know, we're, we're, our goal is to build what you guys want. So that's what we're trying to do.
Right. And, and what the CPC wanted. Okay. Thank you. Does any other board members have any other questions? Let's, let me, I, I think procedurally, we, we get some additional information that will be gathered and then we will continue consideration of, of our, our making a recommendation. But Elizabeth, at our next meeting, is that?
Um, yep. So I, I think the, the remaining items are fairly minor. And if there's a consensus of the board to recommend approval of the project for your next meeting, I can have a draft decision for the board to review.
Okay. Let me, let me make, I know that we're not doing final consideration tonight, but let me ask if there are any members of the public that would like to have any comments or questions for the applicant? Or directed to the board, but pertaining to this project. All right. We got a pretty small crowd tonight. I'm not seeing any hands raised or I don't think anybody styled in. But we've got one number dialed in. If you're trying to get on, I think it's pound nine. Linda, you just grabbed the screen, but maybe that's just because you weren't on mute.
Hey.
Hi Linda.
Hi. So may I comment?
Yes, please.
Um. You know, I appreciate the good discussion that's gone on this evening regarding this application. I would say that it is been quite a challenge, I think, for the CHA to take the amount of land that they ended up getting from the intention of the town meeting to allow open and to include affordable housing on this lot. And I think they're trying to meet that challenge. So that would be the comment I would make.
Thank you very much, Linda. And I, you know, you and I have both been in the room for a lot on this. You know, at the CPC and the like, and I know the long history and that this was absolutely absolutely, a, a, the, a part of the entire Jero land purchase was making, you know, making sure that affordable housing goes in here. So thank you for that comment.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, I think.
Question of Elizabeth?
I, of course, yes.
Elizabeth, so should, should we still have our October sixth NRC meeting and our October fourteenth ZBA meeting? Or should we be postponing those until there's action by the planning board?
Um, no. So the planning board has a meeting September, September twenty-eighth. So the board will, would review their draft recommendation to the ZBA at their twenty-eighth meeting. So there'd be no reason to postpone your NRC or ZBA hearings.
Okay, thanks.
And then Burton. There's one other person raising their hand, not using the raise hand function, just raising their hand.
Oh, Pamela Drit. If you could, I think you've got your hand raised. And if you could identify yourself and state your address for the record.
Pamela Drit, thirteen Concord Green, Unit Four. I just wanted to say, I think it would be an excellent idea to require it to be all electric.
Okay.
That will allow the contractors to not hesitate about figuring doing it differently than they normally do it, which is to put gas in. And they will save money. And the, the, by doing the all electric heat pump, not only because they won't have to have a gas or a fossil fuel furnace. And not only that, it will make the house more comfortable because it will have air conditioning as well as heat. This is important and should be in affordable housing too. I think that the general public doesn't realize that the cost of doing all electric is not in general more than the cost of doing traditional building. In fact, it is getting to be and is continuing to diminish in the amount of it costs to do that. And so we need to push it because it's real important.
Thank you very much for that comment, Pamela. I see one more hand raised. Susan Moldosniak.
Susan, Susan Malodizanik, three ninety-two Border Road. I'm a member of the public and also a member of the West Concord Advisory Committee. I just wanted to mention that we're in full support of this project. As our letter stated, we did review the project seeing that it was going to be an all electric home. And so we would hope that it does stay that way. And I just also wanted to mention that generally when you're building a home as all electric from the ground up, it's not as expensive as converting that home to electric after the fact. And also it'll be cheaper for the occupants to use the electric system. They won't be paying as much in utilities as they ordinarily would be with the fossil fuel system.
Boy, that's, thank you, Susan. And that's an excellent point, especially considering that this is aim, a housing aimed at people that between sixty and eighty percent of the area median income. That lower utility bill makes our cost of housing effectively much lower. And speaking as somebody who lives in an all electric house who has laughably low utility bills, I can see that being a huge benefit to the residents here. So, so thank you very much for that, that insightful comment. Let's see. I think that is now everybody. So. Nope, there's.
One more hand.
Oh, I have Sue Falschen. Great.
Falschen nineteen Sunny Side Lane. Quick comment. In addition to the lower cost of an all, all electric house over the lifetime of the house, it is also less toxic. So it is an issue of environmental justice for low income people. Thank you.
Thank you for that point. Okay. With that, Elizabeth, this was not a hearing, so I think we can just move to the next agenda item. With the, do we need to schedule the formally when they're coming back? For that next planning meeting?
You don't need to formally schedule something, but I don't believe there's any other applications. Nancy will correct me if I'm wrong. Currently on your twenty-eighth agenda. So this would be on for seven o'clock.
Wonderful. Okay. Okay. Well, with that, Rick, we look forward to getting additional information. Sounds like most of that won't be coming from you, but from others. And we will see you back here on the, on the twenty eighth. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You bet. Thanks. With that, with the, the remaining agenda item is administrative item, but for revisiting the Thorough Depot redevelopment proposal. And I hope everybody on the board had a chance to review the design guidelines, maybe potentially what would be design requirements together with the, the sort of the Q and A. That certainly helped gel for me. Some of the things that we, that we're proposing to do. Elizabeth, I did not have a chance to go through the, the proposed zoning changes, except for about the, the first couple of pages. I think I was still in the, the use tables. When I, I ran out of time. So the, the one comment I would have said on the, on the, on the, 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 what you need to know document is that when it, the, the discussion about what is changing, it, 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 I would have actually liked to see sort of a point by point. You know, not, not regurgitating the actual, the, you know, the, the bylaw itself, but that, that, you know, for example, the proposed, the, the current height in the district is thirty-five feet. The proposed height is eight X, you know, thirty-eight feet or whatever it may be. The, 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 the current requirement is for mixed use. It has to be mixed in the same building. Proposed requirement is to allow that in two different, two or more buildings on the same parcel. So I think that would be helpful.
Burton, are you talking about the, the FAQ sheet or?
FAQ. Yeah, sorry. I was using all the other acronyms for those kinds of things. Yeah.
Nope, that's okay. Hang on. So we can, we can start with. There it is.
I thought it was a, a general comment. I thought it was well written. I, I, it was helpful to get a reminder of what zoning does.
So you're talking about having something. So something in, in this section, kind of like a bulleted list like you're talking about.
Yes. Wait, let's see. I, yes, that would be the section exactly.
Okay.
Where I, I, something that just sort of lays out in, in very simple terms, the main elements. They just take like a table format showing.
There was a tape. There was a table like that in the the depot vision plan that, that showed the existing zoning and then the potential zoning. And so maybe you could narrow that. I found that very helpful in, in the vision plan. Page twenty-six.
Yeah, I think that that would be very helpful.
So what I, what I would probably do is somehow look at. Well, I mean, I can, I can cut and paste this whole entire table into the FAQ or somehow try to just condense it a little. But.
Maybe just tack it onto the end. Like exhibit, exhibit A sort of on the end of it.
Yeah. I, I mean, I'll, I'll, I can play with it and see. See what happens.
The, is this a little bit out of date though? Just also, I mean, it may need some updates. I, I wanted to ask some questions about the defining some of the zoning elements by the street that the, the parcels front on. I, if that, that's new, right?
Yeah. So that was something that the board discussed the last time that Chris from M A P C was with the board.
Yes. But we haven't seen anything, how that looks formally today, I don't think. Right? So, so that might be an element of this.
So you're talking about this, the setbacks?
That's the talking about, well, I, I want to see how it's reflected in the actual proposed changes to the, to the bylaw. How we're tying, how we're treating Sudbury and Thore differently.
Okay. So I, I can, I can go to that next. Unless you want to go back to the FAQ.
No, that would, that would be great. I'm sorry. I sort of jumped into the middle.
No, no, that's, that's okay.
It would be great to see that. I think that so much of the feedback we've gotten has a concern. We've gotten, we've gotten feedback positive and negative, but in, and I'll say in the concern category have been along, I think really two things, which is parking and parking and associated traffic as well as the impact of a change in scale. What, that might, something that might be appropriate for the Crosby's parcel. What, that might, something that might be appropriate for the Crosby's parcel with appropriate setbacks, might not be appropriate for the throw, the smaller parcels along Thore Street. And so I wanted to see how that played out here and distinguishing between those two.
And I, can I reserve my right to have a comment on the FAQ or are we moving on from that?
We're, of course, at any time you can comment on anything.
I still reserve.
Okay. Yeah.
Um. So this would be the, the graphic that the board saw. I think it was last time. As far as how the setbacks, so this measurement is A, which is from Sudbury Road. This measurement is B, which would be considered a secondary street, which would be also would be Thore Street. And then C and D. Side and rear setbacks. And then rear setback as a minimum.
Okay, so.
If there's, if it's a but residential five feet has to be landscaped, which is consistent with what the requirement is. Is now.
Okay, so this, this is, we're not just talking about the Cumberland Farms lot, but all along Thore Street, it would be a smaller setback than would be required on Sudbury Road.
Correct.
Was there any, were the, other than setback, were there any? So Sudbury is considered the primary street as it's referred to here?
Correct.
Okay, were there any other changes? Or any, excuse me, any other differences between lots that are located on, on the primary versus the secondary? Other than setback?
Oh, I think it's, I think it's only setbacks, but what? The only other difference would be for, so let's say like the Crosby's lot being allowed to, you know, go up a story if they maintain a much larger setback to the residentially zoned properties.
Right.
All the other properties would not be able to, like on Thore Street, when, would not be able to get that type of distance, their, the lots aren't big enough. So they would not, that needs to be changed. They would not be able to to, to go up to that additional story and that's that's where, you know, originally M A P C had listed this as four stories. At the last planning board meeting, the board discussed, you know, whether it was three and a half stories, four stories. The board proceeded to have a discussion about the visual items that were in the design guideline, I'm going to say, and, and I will put this out there, I think that they're, they're not guidelines, they're going to be requirements. So and in the design requirements, M A P C did go through and amend some of the visuals to address that issue. But this is where they talked about, you know, like if you had a hundred and twenty-five feet from a residential district, you could go, you know, up to the four stories and then the board did not, you know, land on a final consensus on whether, you know, it was, you know, three stories, three and a half stories or four stories. So that's why I left it highlighted.
Correct, correct me if I'm wrong, that whole discussion is essentially the Crosby's lot because of that hundred and twenty-five foot distancing from residential. There's no parcel on, on, on Thore with maybe the exception of what, the maybe the Cumberland Farms parcel that's a hundred and twenty-five feet from residential. And that's a maybe, but.
But the size of the Cumberland Farms lot.
Yeah.
To have a four-story structure assumes a certain square footage.
Yeah.
And all the requirements for, let's say, parking or open space or all those. You, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to have four stories.
Right.
It's, the, the lot's not big enough. So for a lot of, a lot of the properties in the district, the, the actual constraints are going to be, you know, the, the size of the lot and all the other things that need to happen. You need to have, you know, your parking, your driveways. You know, the, you know, different, you know, amenities or, you know, the, the walkway around the building, if there's commercial, your trash storage. So for, for a lot of these projects, you wouldn't be able to, to go above, you know, probably first floor commercial and maybe residential on the second floor. Because the site, the properties are just, they're, their constraints will be the size.
Okay. Um, two things, I, I, well, I, three, I guess three general points. So one of the pieces of the feedback we've consistently gotten is concerns about changes to Thore and I, and I can, the Thore Street buildings, and I can appreciate that, that with the exception of the, the far end of the Crosby's lot, they are generally closer to the budding residential neighborhood. Is, is concern about mass and height. We, what's on the table is a three-foot increase of height all around. One of the things I, I think we should, I, I'd like to discuss is whether, you know, now that we have this idea of a, of a two streets, maybe the Sudbury Road being the thirty-eight foot height limit with that with, with the three and a half, four-story developable height on, on that large parcel. And maybe just leaving that, that the, the Thore at thirty-five feet. As it is currently zoned, the trade-off is of course, that thirty-eight feet is, was arrived at so that you could have a commercial space underneath two floors of residential. But maybe it's more appropriate, you know, given the feedback we've had of having, you know, one space of commercial with one, one story of residential above it. That may, I, I guess the question for the board was, is, is that going to make, mean that there, there would be no re, you know, reuse or repurposing of, of parcels, because nobody's going to go through that trouble for one story. There is an example, you know, in West Concord of the, of the the Concord Outfitters Building, and that's, that's one, those are one-story condominiums, right, Elizabeth, above Concord Outfitters? So may, so maybe it can work. On that same comment, if, if you're talking about limiting the height, you know, one of the things it says in the design requirements is that it needs to be a pitched roof, flat roof can't be visible from the street. I know that sort of idea came out of the charrette when people responded to the Mansard, but, you know, to use again as an example, the Concord Outfitters Building. It is a traditional New England structure, which I think is, it's certainly in, in West Concord, you see examples of it because of the, of the historic commercial buildings that had flat roofs, but I'm, you know, I'm cognizant of the fact that, that the Thore Depot was also, you know, there was a lumberyard and presumably other buildings like that, and, and, and most of the buildings along Thore Street have flat roofs today. Except for the, except for the actual station. And so, and, and maybe, I don't know, maybe Cumberland has a, has a Mansard and, and the, and I guess the, the Starbucks has a traditional slope roof, but I'm wondering if, I, I'm not, I'm certainly not wedded to that idea that you can't have a flat roof, which could make that thirty-five foot height limit more workable. The other thing, just general comment is I know another big concern has been around parking. And I think very clearly in the facts, it's, it's clear that this, this isn't taking away parking, any, any change in use would, would be required to have the parking necessary for that changed use, if it's, if it's multi, if it's mixed use, it would need to have the appropriate residential parking and the appropriate commercial parking. And today, somebody could reuse their, their property today, they would also be required to have some minimum amount of parking, but they wouldn't be, you know, as, as you point out, they could build a big box with a parking lot in front on the street, as there are already some examples of that. And so the parking situation I don't see as really changing, but there's concerns that if you create more flexible zoning, where somebody might want to reuse some of the large asphalt areas for a, a, a denser use, that we could lose the the existing commuter parking, not in the MBTA lot, that's not affected, but the existing MBTA, the commuter parking that is granted under a special permit in the Crosby's lot. And Elizabeth, I would be grateful if you could take a moment to talk to that, because I know, I think a lot of people are a little confused about that and what the town can do to, to, to work with that in the future, what rights we have, how that could change and the, and the like.
So I think a couple of months ago, the board received a memo from the Marcia Rassus and the Director of D P L M back in July, that gave the history of the Crosby commuter parking, and it basically started in nineteen sixty-two, the owner of that property wanted to provide some commuter parking to the town and initially provided, I think it was thirty spaces back in nineteen sixty-two. It, it was just something that the owner did. And then in nineteen seventy-six, the Board of Appeals issued a decision to allow, actually back then it was a variance, but to allow the building to, for the building to be closer to the property line than the allowed by zoning and allowing additional pavement in the residential district to add twenty-five more additional commuter spaces. So there, there has never, there's never been, you know, a special permit granted that said they, they had to provide commuter parking based on some type of use. The current situation is the town and the current owners have a an existing lease that it runs through. It's renewed annually, runs through November of twenty twenty-four. But it's, it's a, it's a regular lease with the property owner. We saw a leasee can give thirty days notice to to not renew the lease and then, you know, the commuter parking would would no longer be there, so.
Is the town paying for that?
So the town and receives revenue from those spaces and a portion of that revenue is provided to the property owner.
Okay, all right. Okay, so the long and short on that is that if the current owner of the Crosby's parcel, and where there's apart spaces are leased, decided they didn't want to do that anymore, they could do that. They, they could, they could terminate the lease at, at sometime within the, the, the next year. And if they wanted to redevelop the property, they could, under the current zoning by right, they could do that and get rid of the lease if they wanted to. Or if they were to redevelop it and require a special permit, continuing some sort of lease could be part of that site, that site, a site plan review.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure under a special permit. I, I, I'm currently don't, can't think of what the nexus would be under a special permit to require a developer to build commuter park, designated commuter parking. I think in the examples in other communities where there has been redevelopment around station, you know, train stations, MBTA commuter rail or regular subway stations. That redevelopment process has been a new, you know, becomes kind of a negotiation. And it's in everybody's interest to, you know, provide some type of commuter parking. But there's nothing that I'm aware of where it's, you know, under zoning, somebody for, you know, every five hundred square feet of resident of retail, somebody has to provide, you know, one space for patron and one space for, you know, a commuter.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not aware of any zoning in place that requires that.
Okay, and, and I'm sorry, remind me the number of spaces that exist today that are part of, subject to that lease?
Fifty-six.
Yeah, I want to say fifty-six.
And are those, are those leased out sort of like off a waitlist or is it on, are you paying on, I mean, I it can't be a daily basis, because I don't see any method for payment there, but I, I live on the other side of town, so I'm not quite sure how it works.
Okay. Part of the spaces are for conquered residences, residents, and the other part are for out-of-town commuters, so there's fifty-six spaces, seventy permits are granted a year, fifty for res, conquered residents, twenty-four out-of-town commuters. Conquered residents pay two hundred dollars for six months and out-of-town pay four hundred dollars for six months.
Is that, is that oversubscribed, do you know?
In the first round of permits, thirty-nine permits were sold to conquered and twenty-one permits were sold to out-of-town residents.
Okay.
So slightly, slightly oversubscribed.
Wait, I'm sorry, well, we can sell up to seventy permits, but there's, we've sold slightly more permits and there are spaces.
Correct.
Okay. But under those cap.
Under the seventy, yes.
Gotcha. Okay, I think, thanks for clarifying that. So maybe at that point, I, the one thing I, I'd like, I want to make sure that the board discusses is this idea that I'm throwing out about height by, based upon street. Does anybody have any sort of reaction to that, whether that's a, that, that would be a, you know, fatal to the, the, the spirit of what we're trying to do here in accordance with the twenty twenty envisioned plan? Or that, that is rather would be appropriate, given the scale of the existing lot size and, and area around Thore.
I did want to point out that the Starbucks did propose a revamp of their building with one additional story, was that story, wasn't that true? It was only once.
They have, I think, a space that is, could be residential on the second floor there that they've never, they've never utilized, probably in part because it's a, a parking lot. Elizabeth, is that right?
Right, but when, when they came to the town, that was just one story that, that they were requesting, wasn't it? Was it two stories, two additional stories?
It's, no, it's currently two stories. They weren't changing the building.
I see, so they were just having occupancy.
Yes, on the second floor.
Okay. That would seem to me to indicate that that there was a demand that, that you know, maybe an interest in just one story on that thorough strip, so it's.
I see.
That's all.
I, I, I take your point, though, that, 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 that is economically feasible to have one story of residential above a, a, a commercial. I I I take your point, though, that 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 is economically feasible to have one story of residential above a a commercial, yeah.
But was roundly rejected at town meeting by the residents of Concord. Interestingly.
You're talking about, they're talking about changing the the boundary of the commercial district to allow a turnaround street. I think that's a completely separate issue. I don't think anybody at town meeting considered the fact that there might be an apartment above Starbucks.
Fair enough. Fair, fair, fair. Yeah, you're right.
Andrew, I saw you.
Yeah, I just, I just had a thought about about making the, when you mentioned making the the rules more granular for the purpose of Sudbury, making it line up that only Sudbury address would be eligible for thirty-five feet. That's what you were saying? Is that what I'm getting?
No, the existing zoning for the area is thirty-five feet today. That's why you have, that's why, for example, there's three-story houses on Sudbury Road today. Though maybe some of them are are taller than thirty-five feet and just grandfathered it. But the, what I'm proposing is the idea that we leave, people seem to be sensitive to, out of concern that changing that from thirty-five and increasing it, although it is increasing it by, you know, what is that, seven percent? Is 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 a bad idea. And and so what I was saying was allow that along Sudbury Road where you have a larger scale of development. And it is perhaps more likely that you would get commercial with two stories of residential above. On Sudbury, you know, we received a very insightful, thoughtful letter, I think. I'm forgetting the author's last name, but talking about the sizes of the lots on Thoreau are different. And so that may naturally limit the size of buildings along there. And maybe people wouldn't be looking to put a two, two stories of residential above a commercial there. And so maybe we should accept that and 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 leave it so that people don't have a concern about that happening.
Yeah, I don't have any, I don't have any strong feelings about that one way or the other. I think if it can't apply, then it's it's sort of a moot point. And if it's, if it's window dressing, then that's great if it's necessary and it would help people be more comfortable with it. You know, if it, if you're saying that thirty-five feet or thirty-eight feet really wouldn't be possible, other than maybe one lot on Thoreau Street, then having it limited to Sudbury Street is fine. The only question is, is does that make the whole process too granular, had in too many districts? Or is it, is it, is it a workable standard that we've done in the past where we've had rezoning where all of a sudden we're creating multiple districts? And would that cause its own education conundrum where you have to teach people, oh, the difference between this and this is this, and then you're, you're deeper in the weeds for another reason? I just don't know.
I I appreciate that. I mean, so just not to be pedantic, but we wouldn't be creating different districts, right? It's all the the Row Business District. We we would, we would be creating header, you know, different areas. I think, I think it would be relatively simple for people to understand because you would say on this street versus that street, right? And 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 I think that that allows people to understand, you know, I I think that would be relatively clear. I mean, to be, to be sure, there are parcels on Thoreau that I think would, it would, would, you know, there's, there's a, there's at least one parcel, which is relatively large on Thoreau. I think that's the parcel that's currently, you know, a building with the the framing store and and restaurant and those. I think that's all one parcel. I mean, that could certainly be developed as a larger building. So the question is, does it make sense in order to, you know, move forward to the Thoreau Business District rezoning as a, as a general proposal to, to to take away that concern that people had about taller buildings right on Thoreau, which has that, that small building feel today? And 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 focus on, you know, helping to realize more potential along a Sudbury where there's some larger parcels you might get, you might get more interest along Sudbury. It's just a thought. I I I feel like, you know, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback on on this proposal. We've, we've been working on it, you know, for, we've had, you know, the public shirts where people came in and responded. I think that the design guidelines give us a really a good idea of improvements we could do because in absence, it is important to remember today there are no design guidelines. And so the the idea here is as there is the the natural turnover of buildings, ownership and things are changed, that we have the potential to enhance what's there. But I also want to make sure we're taking into account the concerns and the two I've heard loudest and clearest were around changing the character for our street. And which, which doesn't, I mean, it's got a lot of parking lots on it, but it it doesn't have the large, you know, parking lot that that Crosby's obviously does in the CBS. But also then the the parking issue, right? And I think that the parking issue is something that's takes education and an understanding about that, that lease and and what impact what we're proposing could have on parking or not have on on parking.
One question on parking?
Yes, Linda.
Is there a prohibition or is it just or engineering impossibility to have underground parking in any of this area like under Crosby's? Could there be underground parking if that were developed?
Cost. I think, I think, yeah, it's cost. I think from an engineering standpoint, I mean, they're building parking garages and buckets next to the ocean and in the Seaport District. So you can engineer it, absolutely. I don't think there's any zoning restriction on structure, underground or even structured parking or maybe it's structured, Elizabeth, is there? No, but it's, it's just cost. I mean,
So if you could have a four-story you know, building where there's underground parking, maybe that would be a way to solve both of these issues.
Absolutely. And and you see that there is in West Concord, Elizabeth, they they did put parking underneath the
Brookside Square.
Brookside Square and and they were very, very tight for parking there. I'm sure there were some of the same concerns with Brookside Square because it's immediately adjacent to the commuter parking. And they they did put a significant number of spaces underneath the building next to a river. So they figured out an engineer court.
That's why they have water in the parking garage underneath Brookside Square.
Yeah, it's good fishing.
Say, wait, they're so close to the river.
Yeah, they, 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 they have water issues sometimes during the year. So what, one thing I did want to just show the board because I think it's important, based on the last meeting that the board had with Chris from M A P C and the comments that were received during the public forum specifically dealt with the visuals and we did in the planning division budget, find some additional funds to have them go back through and reevaluate some of the the visuals that they utilized. And so Chris went back to the beginning charrette where there was the put a dot on the building you liked. He went back and looked at some of the other photos that were in here. He was able to utilize some new photos from projects that have been recently built. I think one came from Ashland. I think, yeah, I think that's, that might be the one he just added from Ashland. But what he also did was take all of the renderings. Previously, they were just white and black, black and white facades and went through and added the color, which now allows people, so these, these renderings did, they didn't change. But now you can kind of see the modulation in, in the buildings and with the different colors and how they set back. So he changed some of those.
And all of those elements that you were just highlighting there, those are specific requirements within the design.
In these design requirements. So he did go through, all of them were like that. And so he did provide color in some of them to show how you know, how they modulate on a site. And and then again, these are just the same design design guidelines as far as what he went through last time, the glazing, the vertical facade modulation and those types of things, which, yep.
Excuse me, I interrupted. Please continue.
No, so the, you know, the, should the board move forward with this, the one other item? The zoning initial draft that M A P C put together. And what I didn't get to do for this first rough draft is how the zoning and the design requirements, how they work together and what needs to be in the zoning bylaw and what doesn't, and it can be in the design requirements. So that's something I still haven't, you know, flushed it like, you know, glazing, glazing doesn't need to be in a zoning bylaw. You know, building modulation, you know, facade modulation, I don't think that needs to be in a zoning bylaw, but some of the height issues or certain aspects of the open space requirements, those should be in the zoning bylaw and not necessarily in the design requirements. So those are just some items that I just haven't completely worked through in my mind on which, what goes where.
Okay. Okay. I can, can I just ask you a quick favor? If you bring back up those design guidelines, that the the image that shows the alignment of the buildings to the street, and I believe that there's a, a building that is, I I wanted to confirm that it's currently as built. It's not in alignment with parking out front.
Am I going in the right direction?
Yeah, it was above this. There we go. So that, that, that's, that's showing an as-built building today, right?
Uh, yes, this is, I think this is the Verizon Store, the Olive Oils Store.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, the parking is up front.
Right. And obviously hasn't taken the time, and he shouldn't to add the architectural detailing, but I think this, this is a good picture to give us an idea of what we're talking about, enabling versus what's there today, right? And or really requiring, right? So that you've got, you've got the building, the buildings engaging with the street without the parking out front aligned with the street wall and with public open space in front instead of parking space in front. I just thought it was very a good illustration of what's we're trying to enable. So for tonight, Elizabeth, you would, I believe the first item you would like to settle definitively, I I sort of thought we'd, we'd done this, but it's whether we want to move forward on the twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two town meeting with a, with an article to do this zoning, right? Is that, that's item number one? Okay, we've had a lot of discussion around this. I think it would make sense to just sort of, you know, take a vote. We're not required to vote on that, but so that we get everybody the record on whether they would like to proceed with making a proposal to town meeting. Where we not, not, not proposing what exactly what we have tonight, but in the direction of what we've got with the refinements Elizabeth was was talking to. So I just, just, you know, being the whip here, Linda, are you in favor generally of moving this forward to town meeting?
Oh, yes, I think there's just been a lot of positive comment that this would be of value. And I'm not sure that pushing it out another year would, would make a difference. I think it would be good to come up with a proposal and see how the town assesses that. But it's easy for me to say that because Elizabeth gets to do so much of the work. So I, but I, but I think so much has been invested so far that we're, we're really close.
Okay, so that's one in favor. Nathan, how about yourself?
Yes, but, yeah, so I I definitely am. One thing I've thought about is that the feedback and sort of positive vibes we've gotten about it when we were having the in-person meetings and we did the what's the word I'm looking for? When we had the
Public forums.
The forums, thank you.
And the workshops.
Yes, that when we had those, I felt like everybody who was there seemed really into it and was positive about it. When we've done the virtual meeting since, it's maybe I'm not reading it right, but I'm getting sort of a fifty-fifty vibe from people. There's been a lot of, you know, negative comments, you know, going back to the parking and a lot of the visual aspects of it and things like that. So I'm just wondering if, yes, I definitely want to move this forward, but should we wait until we can have don't shoot me, another forum where we can have in person and just like discuss these things in a way that I think works better in person than it does virtually. I think, I think this doesn't sell very well in a virtual environment. At least that's what I, what I feel I've seen as we've worked on this over the past, well, it's almost two years now. So, but I I could go either way. I mean, yes, for sure that we should move it. I just terms of when is where I'm at. Burton, I can't hear you if you're talking.
The battery die? Can you hear me now? Okay, sorry about that. I changed my method. All right. So just to be clear, are you asking for a, a sort of a, a public forum where we're getting together to, once we've developed a plan to introduce it to the town before town meeting because it's a complicated issue so people can, or or continuing to solicit feedback at that juncture?
You're muted, Nathan. But just, just so everybody knows, I, the, you know, the full intention with our contract, our, the grant with M A P C is that once things got more fleshed out and we had the draft zoning and in in the format that, you know, numbering in the format and decisions made as far as affordable housing and open space and height. And there was consensus on, you know, the, the vision statement and the design requirements that there would be a, you know, another public forum to say, okay, you know, two years, two and a half years, you know, this is, you know, this is where we're at. You know, this is what the planning board's going to move forward with. So that was always, you know, part of that plan. To your point, Nathan, at, at this point in time, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how, how we could have that type of form in person and meet all the COVID protocols.
Yeah, no, that's exactly. That's why I'm my, that was sort of my butt because I don't know what that would mean in terms of timing and when that would even be possible to do. Yeah, because in my mind, you know, the, the very first forum we had, I thought was great where we had each individual planning board member kind of had a station and was interacting with the people that were there. And so and I thought the feedback and the, the you know, maybe excitement is overstating it maybe, but that there was for, for doing something like this was, was definitely there. And if we could do something similar to that for this sort of final form, again, we're like each planning board member or a pair of planning board members like takes us either as an area within the Thoreau Depot and sort of discusses what that might look like or what potentially could be there, that sort of thing. Or or certain elements or something like that, just to, to break it down because I think that's what we run into is in the, in the discussions we've had since then. I I think people get bogged down and sort of overwhelmed and then, and then they, they just focus in on one thing, whether it's the parking or whether it's like I don't want a thirty-foot, thirty-five-foot building or something like, or flat roofs. Whereas if we can sort of break it down and have a more, more of an interaction, I think it's easier to build support for the project as a whole.
Okay, that's, that's a great thought. And Elizabeth, as we, as we look down the road, what, at what point do, do any propose, any proposed articles need to be? what, at what point do, did, do any propose, any proposed articles need to be finalized per submission? Is that in January?
Um, I think, I actually think the warrant closes sometime towards the end of January.
The end of January. All right.
Give me two seconds and I can, I can find out.
If I, if I may, Nathan, I think just given the state of our existence, that there's no point in planning around January, what, what, you know, whether we'd be able to schedule a forum in that time, it doesn't look likely, but I would propose that if you're generally in favor that we continue with the work and if need be, and we feel that the, the public is not receptive to the idea or need another bite at the apple in terms of a public forum. That maybe then we talk about, you know, the timing and whether 2022 is feasible or not.
Yep.
The warrant, the warrant closes February 2nd.
Okay. Haley, can I get your, your, your general feeling?
Thank you last.
You can, you got last, of course. I'll go to next to Andrew.
Um, I obviously haven't been as deeply involved as everybody in this, but I think you guys have done a tremendous amount of work and it shows in finished product. I think what the forum showed me was, you know, I, I dove deep and reviewed everything and I feel like I understood it based on the presentations and everything. So I, I think to Nathan's idea, it's, it's at this point, it's more about community education than refining what you guys have written. And I, I don't see a problem with moving it forward for town meeting. So I would be on board with whatever schedule you think is appropriate.
Okay. Kate?
Um, I continue to have concerns about the MBTA parking that's currently on the Crosby's lot. I understand.
The town parking, you're talking about.
Talking about the 56 parking spaces that we have now for commuter rail parking.
Okay.
And I think this, I think the FAQ glosses over this, which we have never, I think that the, this issue came up late in this process, which I think is fine because it, it came up. And that's why we're doing this. We never ran it to ground. I don't feel like I understand what the, I understand that this parking could go away anyways. But I don't understand what the implications are of this vote that I could be making could incentivize the owner to do something whereby the town loses 56 parking spaces. I don't know where those spaces go if we don't have them there. There, I, and to me, losing 56 parking spaces around the MBTA station is a bigger problem than the benefits provided by creating new housing and creating the zoning changes. I, and I understand, and you know, the FAQ in a way, I feel like kind of advocates for the proposal without providing, like giving people heads up that this, you know, we were voting for this, this could come along with it, that, oh, you know, probably might need to solve in the future. So I'm, I'm concerned about that. I don't think that we have run that to ground. And like, I don't know why not. Like as soon as this came up, I feel like we should have stopped talking about everything else and said, oh, you know, what, how does this proposal impact that, the viability of that parking on an ongoing basis? So that's my concern. And I, I'm not saying that we can't run it to ground, but I don't think we have yet. So that's, that's my concern. I couldn't, I could definitely not vote to move this forward without really understanding that. And we say, you know, in the FAQ is like, well, we're not actually, there's no, you know, just to be clear, that's not what zoning is. There's no proposal to do anything there. But the renderings that we keep pointing to that we say, oh, this is really what could be done. Doesn't this look great? Are exactly developing that area that now consists of the parking. So I don't, and I mean, maybe there's a solution that's like, oh, maybe we need to redraw this district. Or I don't know what the solution is, but we've never talked about that. So that's my, everything else I think looks great. So much great work went into this. I think all the changes that were just made with the renderings are great improvement. And so I don't, I'm not trying to diminish any of that, but I think to me, I, I don't know how we could go forward without running this to ground.
Okay. So when you say run it to ground, what you, you, we've got the memo from, from Marsha and, and, and Elizabeth spoke to that tonight and we, and I don't know if we've been through it. Well, you probably don't want to review the lease. I think the terms are pretty clear. What, what, what other information do you need to be able to, and that I'm sure lots of other people in town would like to have, you know, in considering this?
Great question, Burton. I guess I would, I would, maybe it's just the discussion that I want to have. So if the question is, A, does this proposed zoning potentially incentivize the owner to develop the property in a different way than he would otherwise? That's A. Is that, is that yes or no? Potentially, maybe? And if that's the case, what what are, are we okay with that? Is the town, okay, have we all, does the, does everybody who's, you know, we didn't discuss this at the forum that we had. That wasn't part of it. That wasn't one of the posters. So I guess, I guess the question is presenting to the public, there is an increased risk or we do understand, you know, these renderings, you know, if we're doing this, we are losing those 56 spaces. And what are the implications of that? I guess I just want that to be part of the dialogue because I don't know how that's resolved. I guess, Burton, I don't have a good answer to your question, but I guess I would just, I guess as a board, I would like to hear other folks' responses to that in terms of like, yeah, I, I've realized this and I'm, I'm comfortable with the town. You know, being a part of this, having that parking go away. And then, you know, I'm comfortable that the town can come up with other solutions for 56 spaces in that location. Or, you know, I, it's my opinion that that this doesn't really change the incentive scheme that the developer's working with. So I'm comfortable with that, you know, or I'm, I'm guess I'm, I'm so uncomfortable with this. I guess I'm curious to know what, what other people are, I guess you all must be quite comfortable with it. So I'm, I'm interested to know how you're thinking about it.
So Burton, Burton, can I, just from a, a planning perspective? Almost. So for the past, I'm going to say, you know, five years, almost all of the zoning bylaw amendments that the board has put forth is to incentivize some type of aspect of development. So, you know, you have through the envisioned conquered planning through the action items. That is the purpose to, to redo zoning is to incentivize some type of other development pattern or other use pattern. So of course that's what this is doing. You know, the, the goal was to incentivize the current zoning. Nobody's, nobody's going to use the, you know, current zoning in its current configuration, especially on a property, you know, as large as Crosby's for like a combined residential, you know, business residential use to, to be able to do something that meets those, those goals of the vision conquered plan. So to that one question, does this rezone, does, you know, this change in the zoning incentivize for a different type of development and different use pattern? Yes, that's the goal. Do, does the, the rendering show there are no commuter parking up front near the street? Yes, it does. Cause that's the goal. You, you, the envisioned conquered plan wants something that's more pedestrian friendly, more walkable. You know, more of a neighborhood feel and removing parking from the front yard is, you know, is one of the key ways to do that. Could the commuter parking go somewhere else? If it was redeveloped as part of the, you know, negotiation with that property owner? Definitely. But as, as I said, I mean, under, under zoning, I'm not even sure. I mean, I, I can put the question out there, but I'm, I'm not even sure that a, a town could say, you know, for, you know, every five spaces that you want to develop, you have to give us one for commuter parking. And I'm not even sure if that's legal. You know, it's something I, I don't know. I'd have to look into that, but.
Would probably be a taking.
Yeah. I mean, it probably would be a taking as, I mean, the, the commuter parking that's there was because in 1962, the property owner probably said, hey, if I get people to park here, they'll come shop. And I mean, who's to say why he initially did it, but but to your first question, yes, it, it does incentivize redevelopment. Two, yes, you know, the graphics do show a building in the front because that's another, you know, that's another goal was to create pedestrian friendly and walkability and not have parking in the front yard.
Elizabeth, maybe I could add to that. I mean, Kate, I, I hear what you're saying. There's, there's, your question is, is we've got the status quo and that's, that's meeting an essential need with the commuter parking today. And, and we are, we are changing the rules for development in the depot. And, and that could, that could change the status quo specifically with respect to parking. So why are we proposing that, right? As a board, as we were saw at earlier exercise at, you know, 10 after seven, we're looking at the goals that are, that, the, the direction that's been provided through a townwide long-range planning process in terms of things that are objectives of the town. And, and I think if you go back and you look at that list, the row business district redevelopment checks I, by my calculations, about five or six of those boxes that are, including the big vision ideas or what, however they're referred to, there's a couple of those that it checks that list. So the, this exercise is about implementing and putting into place those goals. And, and maybe those goals are different from the goals the town had when the development for zoning, what the existing development was, zoning rules were created in, you know, applying to this, the, in this district. And, you know, I don't know when Elizabeth, the 50s, the 60s. Certainly when there was probably less focus on things like affordable housing, environmental justice at walkability, creating, you know, these, you know, open space adjacent to streets. So that's, that's why we're doing it. Is there risk that somebody could say, hey, that is a terrific idea that the town came up with through the envisioned 2020 plans? I am going to put in a mixed use building right on the street with a little, you know, some lovely plantings and there will be apartments for our, our downsizing senior citizens above attractively designed shops. I'm going to do that and, and, and we're going to see the project and say, boy, now we understand that part of the, 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 the cost of doing that is, could be potentially impact on commuter parking. On the other hand, it could be at that point that we say, hey, this is a great proposal and we'd like to, you know, allow you to do these other things that, you know, within, within the, the zoning bylaw that, but in return for, you know, how about what, you can have less green space, but you, you provide some the additional spaces for the commuter light. You preserve parking that, that you lease to town folks along the lines we have, you know, I, I don't think we can have a definitive answer because of the nature of those parking spaces that say those spaces will be preserved because I mean, it's on, on a year to year. I, I was thinking that surprised me. I wish that, I'm thinking about Harvard's lease for their boathouse. It's a dollar a year for 999 years. I wish we had that. We don't. We've got a year-to-year lease and we are introducing change as directed by the town through the, through the long-range planning process. And, and that's why, and that's what this discussion is, that we can't be assured that the parking would be preserved. But what we can do is try to allow for model of development, which very specifically, I mean, through the, the road depot area was called out in the long-range plan. And I encourage all the planning board to go back and look at that. We've all got a copy. And, and, and see how this is responsive and whether it is, and whether there are other town concerns that were expressed in that which run contrary to our efforts.
Thank you, Burton. And I have read the long-range plan and I have a copy downstairs and I, I think all those, and I agree with so many of the goals in there, and they're in the abstract. And it's our job, once we're bringing it down to ground, to realize what is coming out of this. Because when they made the long-range plan, they didn't, they weren't thinking we're going to develop the road business district and at the cost of losing this commuter parking, I really don't think they were. I think they weren't thinking about the commuter parking. And now we are. And so I, if you're, and like, there's these abstract ideas like, oh, well, you know, once this is developed, they'll put the parking somewhere. I don't know where, if we're going to lose that park in the rendering and that's going to, we're just going to flip the pavement from that side over to the other side, like people should see that. We shouldn't show renderings with a park if that's going to be the commuter parking. Cause like that's, we shouldn't be doing that. In the renderings that we're show, the renderings that we're being shown, there is no, there's no room for 56 parking spaces. That's a lot of parking spaces that are there now. So I guess my request, and I mean, I'm one person out of this board and like, I understand that. My suggestion would be to take this to the board of selectmen and put this question forward to them. Like it's, you know, they're, you know, and we're in a, we're in the position, you know, we're, we're trying to implement this plan. Something has come up that we didn't quite realize, which is that, you know, this parking could be affected and it's going to be a townwide, you know, issue if this needs to be relocated and see what they think about it. That's my, that's my.
Well, I, we do have a, a slight board liaison that attends these meetings and Linda's here and, and I think they can provide us their input, but really it, it's this, this planning process is a responsibility of the planning board, not the select board. So I would, I would suggest, I, I, I listen, I hear your concerns and I will, I, I'm going to, I'm going to put you down as a no until this is resolved. For the time being, let me just quickly, Haley, you wanted to go last. I'm just, I, I, and I don't mean to dictate time, but I'm just looking at, it's 9:28. Your, your views on this?
I think I am, you know, I, I, I think I'm more in like the Nathan camp and Andrew camp of like, this is like, we're a lot of work's been put into this. It's not all figured out, but like we are at a certain point and maybe, and you know, we do need, and you know, one more outreach event or something to get feedback, but um, I mean, I do appreciate the commuter rail issue, but you know, I don't feel strongly, we should, you know, hold it back for that. So yeah, it's just, it's definitely like a, it's a tough one.
Okay. Okay. All right. Can I, you say generally speaking, in, in favor of moving the process forward and giving, and giving the town the opportunity to vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So Elizabeth, your first request for us in, in terms of this discussion is where, whether we would move this forward. Speaking as the chair, I think, given the investment of time that this board and our predecessors on this board have made in this process, that leveraging of the, the, you know, the investment that through, through the grant funding that the town has made in this design process, I think it would be the, the responsible thing would be to complete our work and present it to the town for their, either rejection of the idea or, or approval of the idea. Part of me would like to say, let's defer to, to 2023. So our next chair can be the one to stand in front of town meeting and, and present this. But I also think that the further we get from the actual charrette and, and, and discussion process with a professional planner we've had from M A P C, the, the more challenging this will become. I think there are some significant issues that Kate, you're raising them and I am certain they will be front and center in any consideration by the, the town, and we need more information there. But I would be very much in favor of moving forward and putting, and, and trying to develop an article that we can present to the town meeting next spring. Elizabeth, is there anything else you need from us tonight on this?
No, just a, I, I mean, I will follow up with M A P C, see if they have any information or examples of how other community, if there's other communities that, you know, have gone through this similar situation. Cause there are many communities that are going through redevelopment processes and have already gone through. um and have already gone through redevelopment processes similar to this and um, whether any of them are, you know, had, you know, how or if they addressed commuter parking. So I will ask um M A P C that, and then as far as um just uh visually, the fifty-six parking spaces um take up approximately sixteen thousand square, yeah, sixteen thousand square feet. So just to to visually give you an an idea of what we're talking about. So, um, you know, and the Crosby's lot is um not just the grocery store, not counting the CBS, which they also own um, is a little less than four acres. Um, and the CBS and the parking that goes all the way up to Sudbury Road is um about one and a half acres. So I don't know.
So for those of us at Dunham Farm, can you convert acres into feet?
Um.
Maker's forty thousand square feet. Four, it was that Andrew?
What was it, Andrew?
Forty-three thousand.
Yeah, I mean, I can envision it because I'm, I know that lot like the back of my hand because, you know, um, so um, I think fifty-six spaces is a lot. Um.
Um, here, this might, this might be. So that might, this might be easier. Um, so uh it's this lot and this lot make up the two properties owned by um that property owner.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and um, this this is the area of the fifty-six spaces.
Okay. Got it.
Okay.
That was helpful. Thank you, Elizabeth. Um, I I know that we have received some public comment and I believe some members of the public are attending tonight who may have uh comments or concerns. Um, are, I just want to make sure we've covered the things you need from us tonight. I mean, we're progressing this conversation. I'm really glad everybody had a chance to sort of state where they stand and Kate, for you to raise your concerns. Uh, is there anything else you need from us, Elizabeth, tonight? Okay. So I I'll open it up to public comment. If you have a comment, please state your name and your address for the record. Raise your hand or the starter. Okay, I see two raised hands. Um, that would be, let me start with Carol Saboy.
Buddy, um, thank you for the discussion tonight and I appreciate all the time, Elizabeth and Chris Krugel has spent with me answering my questions. I'm sorry, I'm at sixty-one Bellknap Street. Um, is the direct butter to the um throw business district. So that would be on the corner from Priest Cleaners down to um Concord Provisions, uh just to give you an idea of where I live. Um, I wanted to make, I I had sent a number of questions and you've been so gracious in answering them. I sent some more today. Um, I just wanted to make some comments based on the discussion tonight. Um, I really liked the idea of treating Crosby and Thoreau District as uh separate areas within the business district and keeping the height at thirty-five feet as it is today in the Thoreau area. So that was a great idea. Um, the parking in, you know, is obviously a concern. It's always been a concern in this area. Uh, even before this zoning discussion, it's been an ongoing problem. The commuter parkers, we're always parking up and down our streets. We had to change the parking to four hour parking. They still park there all day. Um, you know, Middle Street had the same problem. Uh, you know, things have changed since COVID. There's not as many commuters taking the train into Boston, but um, the change of fifty-six commuter spots, um, I agree with Kate. Uh, I think it was glossed over in my discussions um with Chris and also in the frequently asked questions. I think it really needs to um, take a deeper dive on that and really look at what the commuter parking uh reduction is gonna, you know, impact that's gonna have on the neighborhood. Um, I would also mention that I'm concerned about the new zoning changes. Um, I think you were talking about the table and you showed us the table of, you know, what we have now and what's gonna be proposed and what the changes are. And one of the main concerns again is parking. What's being brought forward is now it's two spots per unit in the Concord Thoreau area and in the proposal, it's gonna be one and a half spots. Um, so by understanding is there's gonna be like sixty-three units over in Crosby's and fifteen units down Thoreau Street. So call it eighty units. Times, you know, two X parking spots, that's a hundred and sixty parking spots. And if you do, you know, whatever one and a half is, it's still, you know, significant, what's that, a hundred and twenty parking spots of new residents, you're gonna have to find parking for on top of the reduction of the fifty-six that you're losing. So parking is a significant issue and really needs to be addressed.
Thank you for those comments. Those numbers you got, were those based on hypothetical development potential of 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 units along those streets?
Yeah, I had a direct conversation with Chris from M A P C and those are the numbers he gave me. He said, what's being, or maybe Elizabeth, somewhere in our back and forth, it was sixty-three units, I believe, is what they uh were envisioning for Crosby's. And Chris said most likely for the Thoreau District, um, the most they could get in were ten to fifteen units. And then the parking today is two X and they want to reduce it to one point five X as part of zoning, which is the, you know, the, one of the major concerns and one of the assumptions that you guys are bringing forward um to make it easier to build.
Right, though that parking, I mean, the the town doesn't have to find those spaces that if you want to be able to build, those are the minimum requirements, right? That the developer provide those spaces, okay? All right. Um, and we, I did receive the letter with your, your, your questions. I apologize. We didn't get to them um in detail tonight. Um, I I certainly read all, you know, all the uh the the letters and correspondence we get. We just didn't have time to, I didn't have time to absorb it today because I got it this afternoon. Um, but thank you very much. Um, I appreciate it.
All right.
Um, the next hand I see is Pamela, Pamela Dritt, if you would state your name and address for the record.
Pamela Dritt, thirteen Concord Green, unit four. Um, thank you very much. I noticed that with residential neighborhoods, our new ability to have planned residential developments allow developers to ask for exemptions for all kinds of things. If what they've done is built something that's really beneficial to the community, that the community could then have it. Could we have something like that for the commercial areas? For example, we can't require the kind of environmental um uh things that we need in order to make Concord safe and also environmentally just. But you can entice and the only way to entice uh is to offer benefits to the builders. And for example, could you not at least allow a an ability for a developer to have an exemption from the height requirement? If what they planned is something that really would benefit the neighborhood, for instance, uh, a mixed use development, net zero, all electric, solar with battery backup um with uh um affordable housing units and rental units and garage parking underneath. And so the the lower level was Crosby's and the next two levels were parking and the levels above that were this brilliant um residential apartment thing. And it was uh something that looked beautiful from the front and that generated uh power for the town. If there's something, some way that a developer could there, there needs to be some way that we can get advantages of exceptional, great ideas that don't fit the rules we've already put in so that we can incentivize. And it has to be discretionary so that you can say, no, we don't like it. No, you have to follow the rules. But if it's a possibility, then people can come up and develop really good ideas. And there might be a way of us saying, being able to say yes to them.
Okay, so so you, what you would like to see, if I may net that out, is um additional flexibility in the, in the discretionary review of the, of the of the reviewing board, be that the the planning board or the zoning board of appeals in return for uh a a increased basket of incentives.
Yes. Making sure that it's discretionary, it's not required.
Mm-hmm, okay.
That will include, that will incite builders to put all of these wonderful things, appealing things in, just to get, say, a little bit less um setback requirements or a little bit higher height and things like that.
Okay, I thank you for that comment. Um, that that certainly, as you noted, part of the PRD process um is is I I it's maybe not quite the 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 um, you know, the holiday shopping list that you would like to see, but it it does have elements of that. Um, and I I'm also uh sensitive to the fact that as the professional planner has advised us, you know, one of the reasons we don't see affordable housing developed is because the requirement is um, uh, the 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 affordable housing requirement today doesn't scale to these, these lot sizes and 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 makes sense economically. So you've got to balance those things. I appreciate the comment. Um, all right, I'd see no further raised hands. It's nine forty-three. I think this was a productive conversation. I think going forward, you know, I I the planning for the members of the board, we did receive um, the, you know, the 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 three documents, the 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 actual proposed zoning changes, the um, the facts and the the design um requirements or what could become the requirements. Um, I still need time to digest those, certainly the zoning changes. Uh, I think it would be great if we could plan to come back together as a board and look at those with specific comments, you know. Uh, you know, Kate, you started to touch on them. You'd like to see the 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 pros and cons of the parking situation more played out, for example, in the facts. And what we can do is see if we can get to a workable place with feedback on those documents. Um, you know, maybe go through and mark them up and um, uh, and and when we get back together, I'd be very productive.
So, um, so Burton, um, if I can, if I can ask two weeks is is a little challenging to 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 turn around and do all of this. So um, I'd like to ask, put this on the October twelfth agenda. Um, which will give me time to go through and and flesh out the where things should go, but also give me time to have that conversation with M A P C um about the commuter parking. To um, is Dritz's comment about the the incentive issue um and whether there's communities out there that have, you know, done that type of uh zoning in a mixed use development.
And it would be particularly interesting to see, you know, in these village centers, especially in the context of the MBTA Communities Act, if there can be incentives tied to creation of public parking spaces. Right? I I think, you know, um, we talked about how that might be a taking, but if you're proposing new rules, which are adding value to the property potentially up essentially upzoning the property in to some degree, can you, to leverage that upzoning? Can you, can, can we require additional parking that's that's created?
So I'm I'm gonna say with most things, um, you have your, 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 your basic, your by right, you know, here it is. Um, and it's the same conversation the board's having with the floor area ratio. Um, the zoning can also, if you want to do this, you know, you you can do this if you um provide us that. So I I know that that ability is there. So I will um, I will ask if that's, especially with the MBTA communities, is that something somebody's already done? And then to Nathan's point, um, I will also talk to Chris about um, the format for um the final, you know, public forum and you know, how how that might be able to go to your point, Nathan. There's no way you can present all of this. And so, you know, maybe it's um, you know, breaking it down in chunks and and not trying to do it all at one night. Um, you know, if people can say, okay, well, you know, we're gonna, you know, here's gonna be an hour, just an hour and a half. It's gonna be this. And and then, you know, a week later. And so I'll, I'll see if Chris has any ideas about how to do that as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I I I, Carol, I see your hand raised. I'm not sure if you you're raising it anew. What I'm gonna do is ask the hold, we're gonna have general public comment at the end. I just want to quickly get through a couple of administrative items here um and sort of grease the skids. Um, are are there any general town planner updates or other planning board liaison updates that anybody has for this evening?
Um, I can just give a a real quick update today. I filed um a CPA application for funding for the next phase for the Assabet River um pedestrian bridge. Um, and this would be the, you know, final funding phase. Um, so going from pre-twenty-five percent design through the whole mass DOT process um to final um and I learned P S and E plans, specs and estimates. Is that what it is, Andrew? So, so I think that's what it is, but getting to a hundred percent in the mass DOT process um roughly a seven hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, so I will be applying for another Mass Trails Grant um for those remaining funds. Um, and so leveraging the CPA funds again for a Mass Trails Grant. Um, I'm gonna ask for the full, you know, what would that be, four hundred and ten thousand? Um, but also um, there's definitely support from the new owners of three hundred, three ten Baker Ave um to get this bridge um built.
Excellent.
So.
I look forward to seeing that. We just passed the deadline, right? Or is that this week for applications?
Friday, this Friday.
Yeah, this Friday. I, and I was gonna say that that's my only update is that it's deadline week. Um, and so people are probably filing them quickly and I'll have a lot more to report after the next meeting on, I think, this coming Tuesday, a week from today. Um, anybody else? Uh, any other liaison reports? Okay, um, with that general public comment and Carol, if you have another comment on that Thoreau Depot, that I'll consider that germane for the general public comments that you've been waiting patiently. You're a little hard to hear.
Okay, yeah, let me turn up the volume. How's that?
I can hear you now. Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you for that. Um, I did also just want to say I liked the idea very much of the one floor um on Thoreau Street as opposed to the three floors development. I think somebody was talking about um, you know, retail on the first floor and um, you know, residential on the second floor, similar to Starbucks as opposed to what Chris um from M A P C A or wherever it is was telling me that he thought that most likely Thoreau um would be three floors. Um, that's what they were targeting. Um, so I think that will reduce some of the density and concern in terms of the height. Um, it's a little bit more in keeping with the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you for that feedback.
Um, the other piece I just wanted to mention was the outreach sessions. Um, you know, I got the flyers in the past about these and in the past um, I used to travel for my job and I was not around when your sessions were being held. Um, and I never really understood what it was all about and it wasn't until recently that my neighbor made me aware of what was going on. So this has been going on. I know you guys have been. made me aware of what was going on. So this has been going on. I know you guys have been working on it for two years. I know you've been meeting with the public and talking about this, but I don't think the, the public you know, really understands the impact of what this is going to mean in terms of, you know, we could potentially have Thero Street with, you know, thirty eight feet of, you know, buildings down both sides of it, right? That's what you want to change it to. And that there could be four buildings in Crosby's parking lot, four feet, four floors high. And that, you know, we discussed the parking situation previously and what, and it will be roughly two years of construction to get this through. And people in the neighborhood have to live with it and your, and the other discussion with Chris was most likely on Thero Street. The buildings are old. If you're going to do any kind of building, you know, he said, we probably would start afresh, which means teardown. So you now are, you know, tearing down everything on Thero Street and building and making it look like ashland. And, you know, people in Concord like the small village, you know, country feel and character of the neighborhood. And, you know, that's a concern too. So I think, you know, people went to these meetings and they said, they were presented with these ideas and they said, you know, this is thirty years from now, long range planning. It's, you know, we're just changing the zoning. Nothing's going to happen. When reality is you're changing the zoning so you can incentivize building and developers will build. And people had no idea. I had no idea. I lived next door, right? We just had a neighborhood party, which block party on Middle Street and Bellknap Street. Nobody knew until, you know, my neighbor told me and we all started talking about it. Nobody knew and we're all direct to butters and it's been going on for two years. So I think you got positive feedback upfront because nobody knew what you were doing, right? And now we, and, you know, there's a lot of documentation. You guys have put a lot of work into it and to dig through all of that. You know, and understand it, you know, it's a full time job. And now people are understanding what it means. And that's why you're getting the negative feedback because people don't want it. Or they don't want it in the current form.
Thank you for that opinion. Appreciate it. All right. With, with any other further public comment? Okay, with that, I think we can adjourn for the evening and we'll see everybody back here on the twenty eighth of September. Thank you very much, everybody, for hanging in there and for the good discussion tonight.
Thanks. Good night, guys.
Good night.